All right, everybody. Good evening and welcome to Wednesday's edition of November's Caucus. Thank you for your flexibility as typically we have our caucus meetings on Tuesday. But we moved it to for November just to keep things a little different. We kept things moving for here November the 5th. So just like to welcome everybody, just a service announcement Saturday. We want to wish good luck to our field hockey team as they, I believe it's in the quarterfinals of the PIAA State Championship. They will be competing 12 o'clock noon at Central Columbia against the Lake Lehman. So congratulations, good luck to our Blackhawks as they continue to roll. Information is on the PIAA's website as well as ticketing information. Let's go ahead and make sure those bleachers are packed with black and orange as we support our Blackhawks as they continue that quest.
And who is their coach again?
12 o'clock.
Who is their coach again?
Their coach is this nice gentleman to my left, Mr. Jason Brousse. Let's give it up for Mr. Brousse. All right.
Who knew? He does more than numbers.
All right, moving into some agenda items, just an announcement coming up. Our meeting is, our voting meeting, our regularly scheduled meeting is November the 11th. It is Veterans Day and we'll honor our veterans during the course of that presentation in our public meeting. We are moving on to personnel items for the agenda, just reviewing a few. It is a little bit of a slow agenda, which is, which is pretty good for this time of year. Under personnel, unfortunately, we do have two resignations. We have Nate Hammaker from the position of custodian and Beth Smalley at the high school, high school guidance counselor. Beth has done a great job as well as Nathan. We wish them both the best as they transition. We have under employment, we have Stephanie Hockenberry as paraprofessional and Nicole Wishard as the position of secretary, working with Terry Walk in the high school office, learning from her as she transitions to retirement. We do have some column movements going into some agenda items. Those column movements, there's going to be several of them, I believe eight. Those column movements were previous that are now going to take board official action due to the ratification of our, of our new collective bargaining agreement contract. We have an agenda item for Mrs. Black, a high school teacher, FMLA, as well as so co-curricular positions, looking to fill those as we enter into the fall season, I'm sorry, the winter season already. We do have a few motions as well, motion to approve, and I want to talk about this for a second. The district administration, i.e. our business manager, to utilize fund balance for operating expenses until the Commonwealth's budget is passed. With the lack of state funding that's coming through in our district, roughly around 18 million from the previous budget that we rely on from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that money is not flowing with the lack of state budget, we're in need to be able to utilize fund balance as we continue with our operating costs. What will happen is once we receive if and when there's a finalization of the state budget, we will be able to take those funds and recoup our fund balance from those. But in order for us to stay operational and keep all programs and everything at this point copacetic, it's imperative that, that we get that authorization to continue to use that. I'll take questions at this time on that item. Once again, we do our budget work. We need our friends certainly in Harrisburg, our elected officials to do their job as well.
I will just make a comment, kudos to our board for being fiscally conservative because we are in much better condition than other districts. And being on the board at the VOTEC school or the technical school, there were conversations about whether some of the districts were going to continue to be able to pay the tech school what they owe for tuition over there. We are not in that place yet, but kudos to our board for being fiscally conservative and responsible.
The next agenda item kind of echoes that, and that's a resolution. I'll share that resolution out with you.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to imply any of those districts were not responsible with their finances if it came off that way, it didn't. It's just, we're, for many reasons, we're, we're in a good place, not, not because anyone else has been irresponsible if that came off that way.
Well, I think the prudence of you as a board and having a healthy fund balance really plays into it, and we would really, at this point, be looking at some significant reduction in programs at this particular point and even maybe perhaps how we operate without that strong fund balance. So kudos to you as a collective board for keeping that fund balance healthy for times, unfortunately, when there are situations such as this, when there's a lack of a Commonwealth budget, which I believe is about 148 days late at this point and counting. The next is a resolution. I'll send that resolution out as a sample here this week for you to take a look at. It's basically language collectively as a group that will sign on to ask, and we'll send it on to our local representatives and the local senator to ask them to continue that momentum to get this Commonwealth budget done and to fully fund public schools the way that's intended to. We have a second read, which is motion 907.1, which is tobacco use on campus, the restriction of tobacco use on campus. We have a motion to approve a field trip, the senior class of 2026 for a day trip to Ocean City, New Jersey on May 26, 2026, with one day of school being missed. We have three donations. We have a donation request being, being offered to us for $1,000 from Fitzpatrick Media, and that will go to the student athletic activity, and that's from part of that T-Mobile sponsorship agreement that was in, in place, the T-Mobile Friday Night Lights. And we have a $2,000 donation from an anonymous donor to go towards elementary lunch, lunch balances, and a $300 donation from an anonymous source to go to the elementary. So thank you to those individuals. We respect your rights to remain anonymous. We appreciate your kindness, and we'll apply that accordingly to the elementary students and their accounts. At our December meeting, we will also have, I'm sorry, at our November meeting, we'll have Klasik and Associates. Tony will be here, our auditor, to review the preliminary results of the 2425 audit. And thank you to the business office staff and to Mr. Brousse for their hard work on that, that audit. That sums up agenda items for November the 11th. Any questions on those items? All right, hearing none. I'm going to kind of shift gears a little bit. I'm going to ask if, Quandell, if you want to go ahead and maybe go first, that way, as we get into calendar discussions, you might not have to stay for those if you don't want to. We'll ask you to go, and then we'll go ahead here with our connect to care, and then we'll round out with calendar discussions. So we definitely, at this point, we asked Quandell Energy Solutions to come this evening to talk a little bit. They presented in October about the phase of the investment grade audit, the steps. You got a chance to meet them as a company. Now we asked where, where are we at in timeline wise? Kind of give us a little bit of, of, of just a quick snapshot as to what we're doing, when that's going to be wrapped up, the next steps and the phases of the timeline and what we're looking at at this point.
All right, all right. Now we're going to talk for at least 30 minutes. Huh? Yeah? Okay. So thank you for, for allowing us to come back tonight. We will be brief, Ben, remember that, we will be brief. So we just wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update, talk a little bit about the scope, what we initially proposed, some changes that are happening kind of as we've dug into the buildings a little bit more, things that we feel are prudent to address now. And then we're going to talk a little bit about some of the key schedule milestones coming up and when you'll get the pleasure of seeing us again. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Ben.
Thank you, Rob. All right, so high level overview of the project as it stands right now. At the middle school, we're looking at HVAC upgrades and replacements. We're looking at your big box spaces, your smaller classroom spaces, and then your even smaller office spaces. So we're addressing the units in, in all those areas as well as the chiller plant and addressing the insulation in the middle school for the chilled water insulation. Moving on, we're also addressing the flooring fixture replacement at the middle school and high school. We'll be looking to install some epoxy floors to make that easier to maintain as well as replacing the plumbing fixtures and, and partitions. Then we have the hallway flooring replacement at the elementary school and middle school. Those are in select areas to be replaced. Then we have the ceiling grid and tile replacement taking place at the middle school. That's going to be building wide in every area that has an acoustic ceiling tile grid. Then we have our lighting replacement that will be taking place in the hallways and classrooms. This is going to make those fixtures easier to maintain and manage. There's some, there's some failures with those systems, so we're looking to renovate that. And then we have the window and door replacement taking place at the high school. It will be all windows and doors with the exception of the front entrance. We'll talk about that a little bit more later on. Then we have our EFS improvements, whether that's the repair or the improvement to the infiltration that's taking place in the LGI space here. And we're working to cut the bottom of that, that EFS insulation system to make sure water doesn't wake up into it. So it's a maintenance, maintenance item to make sure that system lasts into the future. And then lastly, we, we have some external facade painting at the middle school and high school. The high school is to protect that EFS system and also give the building a little bit of pop. And then at the middle school, take some of those accent colors that are selected at the high school and have those reflected on in some small areas. So what were some of the discoveries we, we stumbled upon, we discovered as we were going through this investment grade audit? First thing was, we, we knew that the utility meters, the electric utility meters were consolidated in the early 2000s. This was done to reduce your rate. Your electrical rate was reduced by going that consolidation route. So it was a very good fiscal move. But for us, we like to understand what's the breakout across those buildings. We want to see how is each building performing? So that was one thing we started to dive into a little bit across the campus. So a lot of positive movement there. We want to make sure that our project includes capacity to measure your energy consumption, specifically at your middle school as we're pursuing that HVAC project. Because any time in the future, if you experience issues, we will see those issues appear on those utility bills as we go through the M&amp;V process.
One of the other things there is it allows us to be and project more accurately what the energy savings will be on the changes that we're going to make at the middle school. Right before, we had one master meter here for the entire campus. So we were having to try and extrapolate, how much energy is this building using versus this building? We've discovered the sub-metering information is all there, that we can pull it out so that we can then put together a real understanding of what the electrical usage is at each building. So we can then be more accurate in projecting what those energy savings are going to be.
Moving on to the hazardous material testing, we selected a couple of key areas that we felt were important to make sure that they were, they were clear of any hazardous material. The positive news is everything came back clean. We've got no issues and we're pursuing with that scope. Moving on to the middle school HVAC system, we are looking to right-size your air-cooled chiller. When the building was originally constructed in like the 1990s, you had a larger system than you have today. And there was an addition that was put on in the early 2000s that further added additional square footage to your building. So as part of this project, we want to make sure we're right-sizing that chiller so you, you can properly dehumidify your space and cool the space to meet the educational needs. Next off, we discovered some issues with your air handlers. During the investment, I'm sorry, during the request for a proposal phase, we recommended a replacement, I'm sorry, a refurbishment of those units. That's typically our approach. But after receiving the drawings for the buildings as well as surveying them in person, we came to realize that these units are 32, 33 years old. They're, they're quite dated. Typically, they last around 25 years, depending if you're taking care of them, if they're in really good condition, not always the case. In this situation, on the photo on the top right, you can see one of those air handlers serving your cafeteria space. Right below that unit, you can see a rectangular pan. The purpose of that rectangular pan is to capture the, the moisture that is leaking outside of that unit. So that's a unit that has completely failed and needs to be replaced. And most of the air handlers across that, the middle school are of the same vintage. So we want to make sure we're, we're replacing those, especially as we, we learn about the, the maintenance issues that are, that are coming with those units. Moving on to the high school windows and doors, our IGA discovery as we surveyed the roof was there were additional windows that were not part of our, our initial study. So we're capturing those and marking them up, and we've got a, a solid set of documents to capture that scope. But there was some creep as far as, okay, we didn't, we weren't able to identify these windows early on, and there were also some courtyard windows that we, we were not given access to. Now we have the documentation to support, where are those windows located? What are their dimensions so we can get valuable, valuable numbers to replace them? We also had some discussions with the, our architect to determine, can we reduce the number of operable windows in the school district to reduce the cost of replacing these windows? In every classroom, there's six to seven operable windows. We're looking to reduce that to about three, and this will have significant cost savings in, in addressing your window scope.
Yeah, if you look at the picture in the bottom right corner there, you'll see the bank of windows along the wall. The plan right now is to keep the three windows in the middle as the operable windows in order to bring in some fresh air and then fix the, the two on either side of that. So we're, we're thinking of ways to try and save the district money as we go through this project and, and identify those opportunities. So that's, that's one of the ideas that we came up with, so wanted to share that.
And lastly, as part of the window and door scope, we identified various steel doors across the high school that are in very good condition. We feel that the, the doors can be maintained and new weather stripping applied to them, making sure that your building is in fact airtight, as airtight as we can get it. But the hardware, as well as the structure of the doors and the frames are in amazing condition, and we don't recommend replacing them. So that was an example of some scope there that we felt could be pulled out. Moving on to the restrooms, we're looking at the restroom replacement at the middle school and high school. We've got ongoing conversations with the code official to determine what is the best path forward there. And then lastly, we have the painting at the middle school as well, as well as the high school exterior. We're working with our architect to come up with some conceptual plans as far as what, what will that paint look like and provide some options for you all to discuss.
All right, I'll turn the conversation back over to Rob to talk about the schedule. Before I go into the schedule, so the idea is when we come back for the approval of the board for those, some of those ECMs, specifically the paint, we're going to give, we're going to bring some options forward for you to make a decision. So we're working with the administration to come up with a couple that we think work, and then we're going to give you guys the, the final say as to which direction we go on that. So, all right, so schedule. So you'll see the cup, top two are already crossed out. I may have been a little ahead of myself with crossing out the second one. I realize now that that is tomorrow. But we do have the bid packages out there for our, our trade partners to look at. Tomorrow, the 6th, there will be a meeting with them here, giving them all access to the buildings to really kind of dig in and look at everything so that they can, you know, give us the best pricing possible. I think as we talked about in October, our plan is to come back here on the 1st for your meeting then and ask for approval of the initial group of, of ECMs, primarily the HVAC, the windows, those items that have long lead times associated with them. We have a couple other pieces plugged in with that, but we want to try and get those items ordered as soon as possible so that we, A, are beating any price increases coming and B, making sure that everything is here ready for us to, to get started with construction over the summer. So the plan then would be to pick up the remaining scope of that project at the February meeting, coming in with the final pricing and everything for that. So that, that's where we're at with all of that as far as the plan. Now, you all know as well as I do, things don't always go to plan, so we may be coming back with some revisions to those dates, but that's, that's, that's the path we're going down right now. And then you'll see below that, construction's starting. You know, we want to get started a little bit before school lets out so we can get mobilized and be ready to go as soon as the kids and the teachers are out of the building. So we're, we're going to be here in May to, to be ready for that substantial completion. We're looking at the 21st and the first day of school, which you guys haven't decided yet. Whenever that is in August, we'll be ready to go. So we're excited. We think we've got a really good plan in place to get all the work done. So with that, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Well, first, we appreciate you coming back and sharing this, this milestone, this timeline. I think it's a good timeline. And as you said, there's, there's potential where things could, could shift and change. There's potential where we might, you know, have a need where we might get every, need to, to have a meeting in order to be able to move forward with something depending on, on what information comes forward and what information comes back from November 6th in that timeline as, as, as to what we're looking at. I appreciate certainly, you know, our team from Sesquonita, JT, and, and the support of Panoni, and, and all of the conversations we've had thus far, even just during the IGA phase, as we continue to look at how are we refining certain items that we identified, small one is the doors, to the inoperable versus operable windows? And just looking at the full amount of what is the best value and the best dollar certainly here for us? And then what is something that we need to do that's going to continue to, to preserve the lifespan of the district and not certainly that A, saves energy and B, is something that doesn't require, you know, large amounts of maintenance on a regular basis? So a lot of this, all of this scope certainly came out during the, during the processes of multiple years. When we did our Phase 1 feasibility study, when we did our own internal facility study, when we did our most recent facility study with Panoni, all of these items came out as either deferred maintenance, needed maintenance, and long-term items. So taking these items that we know we need to, to repair, replace, refurbish, on top of the potential, and this is why we're doing a, looking at a GISA, combining those with the potential to save energy in the long run allows us to maximize not just construction, but maximize energy savings and preserve these, really, these, these solid buildings for, for the next 20-plus years. And that's certainly our goal, and to make sure the environment is, is adequate, ready, and continues to grow as our students grow.
Yeah, just one thing, I, I do want to say thank you, Mr. Howell, JT, the entire, everybody at the district has been very accommodating. Ben is a tremendous pain to Mr. Howell. I don't know that Scott would admit that, but they, they've spent quite a bit of time together over the last couple of months. So it's been great, and it has really allowed us to better understand how your buildings are, are built and how they're operated so that we can bring value to that in the future.
Thank you. Any, any questions? Sure.
Kelly Nos, Penn Township. It's kind of directed at both the board as well as you. Is there a plan in place to allow our summer programs to continue on the district property? Like maybe summer school, early birds, things like that? That way, construction and the programs continue this summer, or is that going to be impacted?
Well, I think there's a lot of factors when we look at summer programs, the factors of, of budget, factors of, of where and what and how. We haven't really got to that point yet, and that's something we will have large-scale discussions on. But to answer your question, if it's a direction we want to go in terms of summer programs, and there will be spaces that will be available for use, absolutely. When you look at the larger scale of, of, of the areas where it will be most restricted will definitely be the middle school, that will be the most restricted. That's going to be probably off limits in the most part, just due to a lot of those ceiling tiles, construction, piping insulation, feel free if I'm not doing it justice. Here, there'll be some limited renovations and parts, so here there'll be some, some pieces and some areas that will be restricted. Elementary floors, that's something that certainly can be worked around, and in terms of that, it'll probably more than likely be done in sections, so certain areas can be used while that work is being done. And that scope is limited at that point to some floors. We'll be looking at some window replacement. That'll be done while students, you know, could, could have a summer program, and, and there won't be any security vulnerabilities there.
In terms of flooring, I know we had the issue with the odor of the gym, and I thought you mentioned that we might be doing some epoxy stuff. Is that something to be concerned about?
Yes.
With students in and...
Yeah, that won't, that'll have to be done in, in areas where they've mentioned that before. We'll make sure that the timing of that doesn't occur while, while, while students are...
While the students are there.
Yep. Yep, or it's blocked off to a certain area. Plus, if we're doing bathrooms, there has to be operable bathrooms, so you can't shut them all down at one point. So those are all be things, those will all be things that we'll need to coordinate and communicate. But more than likely, certainly the construction comes first, and certain programs may, may have to be, look a little different, maybe feel a little different, spaces may be a little different, how we use our spaces may be a little different.
To, to that end, I mean, if that's a concern, we have equipment that we use when we do hospital renovation projects. It's called a negative air machine. So that way, none of those odors and smells are getting out into the space. If that's something that the district is concerned about, we can certainly look at, you know, employing those measures.
Great question, though. All right, and to that end, we know our cleaning schedule is going to look a little different in each building. Visibility of rooms, availability of setups is going to look a little different, which means our start of our school year may look a little different for teachers and how and who has what access. But we're going to make it all work. The goal certainly is the goal. This team here has, has done this before in other school districts with a shorter timeline than this, and we're going to avail ourselves to help in any way, shape, and form that we can. And one thing I've already known is that they're, they're good at communicating, and we'll, we'll really break it down into floor plans, timelines, and, and communicate. And we have incredibly flexible principals who are used to working around all kinds of things also. So it'll be, it'll be good.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next presentation we're going to tee up. This, this presentation really came out of, and I commend Ms. Snyder. She was at a meeting for us here this summer as we have a partnership already with the United Way, and this partnership extends to early learning, the ability to, to get early learning in the, in the hands of, of our youngest students and our resources into the hands of our parents. With that, she was approached about an opportunity... With that, she was approached about an opportunity that could benefit our, our community here, at really, little to no cost here for the district, actually, no cost here to the district, besides availability. And, it really is, it was something that, anytime we, we have a chance to be able to connect as the hub of the community, it's something we want to, we want to share and bring to the attention. So, thank you, and here with us to, to really spearhead, it's a passion, and as a social worker, our contracted social worker with the Capital Area Intermediate Unit, she's passionate about bringing resources together, people together, to be able to solve complex problems, and I'm proud to introduce Ms. Michael Fikus.
This is going to be a great program. Again, it's a United Way facilitated funded program. It can assist parents and guardians and students with accessing healthcare needs, as well as mental health-related social needs. We can work with the available resources in the community, and the nice thing about it is, we will be assigned a community health worker that will actually work with me to manage referrals. The community health worker can handle up to 25 families at a time. So, this will be a nice way for families to be able to connect in person, and via phone with someone. So, the contact would be me as the school social worker, and again, we'd be working with our community health worker with 25 families at a time. The referral process would be relatively easy. We would look to myself, the school nurse, and counselors, to make those referrals for any families that might be in need of things like mental health resources, insurance, food scarcity, and all of those things. The nice thing is, we will not need to use Carisolus anymore. That is, right now, our mental health referral source that we use for therapy in the community. We are actually paying for that, but this program with the United Way is no cost to the district. It's a nice extra resource. It can help free up time for other tasks and duties, because we'll have our community health worker working, again, directly with our families. We've had a lot of success in partnership with the Ready to Learn and Ready to Succeed Program at the elementary levels. Again, we can address student health needs and social needs, and then we can help parents and guardians navigate healthcare navigation, because it can be very difficult at times for them to be able to access insurance, and just being able to access services in general in the community, it can be really confusing. So, again, the connections would be with mental health, vision, dental, and medical appointments. We will be able to help parents sign up for CHIP and medical assistance, food insecurity, utility and expenses, and living assistance. Again, this is different from what we're doing right now with Carisolus, because Carisolus is only primarily for therapy and mental health needs in the community. So, our next step would be to approve the MOU at the November 11th board meeting. Once approved, Contact to Care will tentatively be available to start in December of 2025. Does anybody have any questions?
Who's the mental health provider that works with our SAP teams?
So, at the high school level, we had Team Care, but however, funding has been eliminated for that program. And at the middle school level, we have a representative from, I want to say it's Penn State Medical Center.
Normally, there's like a drug and alcohol person liaison, a mental health liaison.
At the elementary level, we have a drug and alcohol liaison. We also have our county casp worker, who is Julie Bedea.
So, so with the lack of funding that came through from Teen Line this previous year, you guys, certainly as a board, I believe it was last June's meeting, partnered with, I would say, the leader in this area when it comes to psychology and student psychology, and his name is Dr. Delarme. So, when we get a referral that looks for, and the checklist comes through, parental permission, we would contact Dr. Delarme, who would come in and do those mental health evaluations for us.
So, I, I didn't, I just wondered if, I assumed this person would not necessarily be on the SAP team, because you already have the nurse, you already have the counselors, who are on SAP team, who can then take that referral to this organization. This, you talked about it being a, the community health worker. When we talk about a community health worker, what's that community? Are we talking all of Perry County, or, or...
This health worker would be assigned specifically to the Susquehanna School District. Right now, they had a partnership program, I think it was a pilot program at Susquehanna Township. I believe that was one of the first programs they've ever done, so they did that, have a community health worker there. But I think the goal is to have, you know, several different community health workers across the counties.
So, we, I think it's amazing, so once we identify our counselors, nurse, identify, and talk to the parent, the parent wants to get involved in some type of mental health or, you know, health issue, then, that, that becomes so difficult, especially after, the mental health piece after COVID, it was ridiculous. So, what this would be is our counselors would then contact this organization, or put the parent in contact with this organization, and then, our, we would wash our hands of it, basically, and then say, this person and this organization and this parent, go for it. Is that what I'm envisioning?
In a sense, but as the direct contact person here, it would also go through me, so I would be able to keep, you know, tabs on each case that we had with the community health worker, which I think would be nice, again, because our Carisolus program, parents don't get a face-to-face, and this way, they could get a face-to-face, where they can actually meet with someone, and they can help identify the needs.
So, the goal would be, your goal, our goal, would be to facilitate getting people hooked up with the services that they need?
Yes, absolutely.
That would be, that would be the goal. Like, we wouldn't be keeping track of all that, or whatever, unless the parent calls and says, hey, this happened, but for the most part, we're going to just hook them up with someone who can get them their services they need.
Exactly.
Which is phenomenal.
Yeah, it's a really amazing program, so I'm really excited.
The only data we would receive is disaggregate data. It would be non-identifiable to know how many, how many families were served, where, where and what area they were served most in.
Is this a, a, a trial period, or is this is paid for by the United Way, for how long, or is it through a grant, or is this...
Yeah, that's a really great question, and, and really, I think a lot of these are, are the support of the United Way. And as funds continue to flow to the United Way through charitable, lots of charitable donations that come through, and philanthropy of organizations and individuals, I think they're able to fund, really partnerships, because part of the large-scale United Way's plan was to look at all of these different areas, and serve the greater, the greater areas that are, that are, number one, maybe underrepresented, and be able to have connections and partnerships, to connect people with, with entities that are already in existence, and not duplicate processes, organizations that already serve. So, and maybe not having their own food bank, maybe not having their own health clinic, but being able to connect, and having a person that can connect them to things that they already know about, or are in existence about. And really, that's what, a lot of what the United Way has done, because anybody right now, who's, who's struggling even before this, can pick up the phone and call 211. And 211 is a United Way partnership. It can connect them to mental health, it can connect them to utilities that they may need assistance with. It is somebody that's staffed 24/7 on the other end of that phone, to be able to connect them, and what this is doing is putting a person here that connects with our social worker, to help our families in the community.
And lastly, will, will we get a copy of the MOU before the meeting, obviously, so we can read it before?
Yes, you will.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for coming, and thank you for leading this. All right, if you, if you have an opportunity, please go ahead and pull out your calendar, noted draft two, and we'll pull up the presentation and get started with our discussions as we prepare our calendar for the 26, 27 school year.
You're going to, you're going to know I wasn't here for the first version.
Well, if you see something, this is certainly a discussion, so go ahead and...
I know, and I get, I get poked fun at, because I'm the one that, I'm the, you know, the calendar Nazi.
Not at all. So, definitely, if you, if you see something right off the bat, there's a couple things I want to point out, though, real quick. You will not see open house dates on here. We did take those dates out. We're going to allow each building to really have conversations with their building leadership and their teachers, to, to look at, at the start of the school year, when are those back-to-school nights slash open houses best? And then we will, they will communicate those out, and share those out with us as well. That way, in case there's movement, we're not locking it in, they will pick those and make sure they're not redundant of each other.
I think that helps, because the symbol is still on there.
The symbol is still on there, and if you've ever, it's very, this will all get cleaned up, but it's very tricky moving some of those around, and you begin to delete, and, yes, those will, all of this, and its final draft, will get cleaned up.
Okay, so just a couple things, and you may have explained this when I missed the meeting last time, April 9th, did you just, is that just plugged in there, because there's really no other day off in the month of April? Just to kind of, because it seems to be a, a bit of a, sort of a new day off.
Yes, and it's our fourth snow makeup day.
And I also noticed we're not, we don't have anything off on the 4th of September. I think historically, weren't we having like a two-hour early quit there, or...
Typically, in the past, that has been a day off, I believe, and we did not this year.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
So, I noticed that the marking periods are not divided by 45 each one.
Those marking periods will need to be redefined, once the calendar is done. Those marking periods will be, will be realigned.
To 45 days each?
Correct.
Okay, so, with that in mind, I know, I thought that there was a two-hour early quit, that was sort of aligning with the last day of the marking period. So, if you move the last day of the marking period, they're not going to align with those two-hour early quit days.
Yeah, and we'll have to take a look at those, but usually, around that time, the idea certainly is for, especially at our elementary, middle school, high school, to finalize grades. It can be a little bit before that, usually, sometimes after the marking period is completed, right before grades are stored and report cards are finalized.
So, I've, I've counted the days, just, if you wanted to maybe just look at it now, just, so it looks like the end of the marking period's going to be the 29th of October. Is that two-hour early quit on the 23rd still aligning with what I know we wanted the educators to be able to have, that end of the marking period sort of, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we'll have to look at, since it is the 29th of October, it may be more beneficial to look at that Friday, the 30th.
And I think my only heartache about that is then, the following week, you're off, you're going to be off a two-hour early quit on the 30th, then bring them back to school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, then have them off a two-hour early quit on Thursday, then off Friday, then back in two days, then off on Veterans Day. I mean, I'm okay with the 23rd being the, the two-hour early quit, I just wanted to make sure that the administration was aware of where that falls.
It's archery season, so it's important, we got that time, you know, to get into woods.
Okay.
I will certainly go back, and, and I think the key to those two-hour windows is to talk with our teachers, so I'll go back and, and be able to have another conversation with our association, to see where that falls, and where that, that, really, that value, where they need that time the most. I would probably counter-argue that anytime is valuable time, that they would certainly take, but looking at where that might, might fall.
So, the same thing, then, if you want to talk to them about January, because it looks like the next marking period's going to end on the 20th, and your day, your two-hour early quit will be on the 15th before that.
Okay.
That's going to fall with Martin Luther King Weekend, yes. And then I have the third marking period ending on March 31st, which would be after Easter, the two days after Easter break.
Okay.
I thought, you did just say you're going to do the little markings, I noticed that you didn't have the little squiggly around the first student day, but I presume you're going to put that in. So, my only other comment is about the order of snow days. I'll throw out my preferences.
Sure.
I think it kind of aligns with what we've done in the past. I like the November 30th being the first one. My recommendation would be the second one be March 25th.
29th, you mean?
No, the 25th. I, I think people like having the day after a holiday off, because of travel on that holiday.
Okay.
That gives people, if they're away for family on Easter Sunday, they're not rushing home to get home, so kids have to go back. I think I'd like to maintain that as one of the last ones we give up.
Okay.
So, switch the 25th and the 29th, instead of three and two, two and three?
I have one, yeah, I have November 30th, then March 25th, then April 9th, I thought would be the third one, and then March 29th would be the fourth.
Why would March 29th not be the third?
Just because I, this is, I just think that it's...
Why would the 25th be the third? Why would the 25th not be the third?
Because it's the second one.
I see. Oh, I see what you're saying.
I think that gives you November 30th, because that's the first one, that's probably going to be passed anyway, but, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I see. So, you would switch the 29th and the date in April?
So, I have November 30th, number one, March 25th, number two, April 9th, number three, March 29th, number four.
That makes sense.
Are you talking about me?
I just said it may be one of the shortest conferences we need to be having, and I said it like that, we're not over yet, so...
Yeah, so I presume that when we get the final, final, all of the, like, the marking period stuff in the little green block down, that everything's going to be all cleared up, that will, it'll be the final thing of it, yeah.
Is there a reason why you can't come back earlier?
You can come back at any time, certainly earlier, and it would push up earlier. We try to align kind of where Labor Day is, and use Labor Day as kind of that benchmark of where the starting point is, and then kind of work backwards from that point, taking a look at where the previous calendar was. Yes, I will, I will honestly say that the longer, the, the later that we start, the more advantageous it is for construction, for sure. Couple days may make a big difference, without a doubt, but that's not the primary reason on this calendar. It was looking at where Labor Day, and then working from that Labor Day. Again, I haven't met with my colleagues in, in Perry County yet on the calendar, I think we're getting a little bit of a jumpstart on that. I know Cumberland Perry is working on their calendars as well, and we try to align the best that we can along those, along those lines, too, but they, they may have, I know some other school districts have some major construction, so they're looking at after Labor Day.
I, I will say, this year, I think, is the earliest, Labor Day came as early...
It was early this year.
...as it could have came, and we did have some pushback from some parents, asking why we started school so early in August. And, and the answer was, because Labor Day was so early, and that since our calendar moves the first, the start of the school day in accordance with when Labor Day happens, you know, that, that it's, that, you know, that it's not always so early, because some parents, like I said, this year, there was some concern about that.
Right, and next year, Labor Day is going to be the latest it can possibly be. So, that's why we're, it looks, it appears like we're starting a lot later, but it's only going to shift earlier from the next year after that, because it's on the 7th, which is the absolute latest.
I mean, having said that, we could start whenever we want, if there's a, a reason, Mrs. Wildburn, that we want to try to move it earlier into August.
I just feel like those, those few days that you come back after Memorial Day are really just a waste, like, what I, and so, I guess that's my, my question of, and maybe it would be, maybe this, there's, what those days would be used for isn't really going to change, no matter where they are, but, what does that, what does that look like?
And I, I think, sorry, do you want to answer that, or? I, I think when we had the discussion on Memorial Day over the years... I, I think when we had the discussion of Memorial Day over the years, when we, when we tried to finish before Memorial Day, when Memorial Day was May, May 23rd, were the early Memorial Days, then we were finishing so early in May that to get all of the May stuff in, there wasn't enough days in May to be able to do it. I mean, I think, I don't know. My opinion is no matter when your last day is, the couple of days leading up to the last day are always going to be the non-days, whether they're before or after Memorial Day. It'll be just the week before, I mean, but.
You know, I also noted that Keystone, which surprises me, the Keystone testing window is May 17th to May 28th, which is really late. So Keystone testing is over the day before Memorial Day weekend.
It's probably because they moved everything based on Labor Day and when that started and everything shifted.
Any, at this point, any administrator comments? So timeline wise, calendar, we'll clean up some things. We will look at December for draft three. And then from there, our target will be January approval. If everything looks good and all, everything adds up appropriately.
When you have up on the third bullet point up there.
Oh, sorry, not December. It'll be January's caucus because December, sorry, we don't have a caucus meeting due to reorganization. So it'll be January caucus review and possibly January board approval or February, depending on where we're at. Sorry.
The third bullet point you have down, consider adding another trade day.
Yes.
What is, what's the thoughts?
What's the thought on that? That was feedback from the association. I believe in the past, we've had two trade days in the previous calendar, three trade days in the previous calendar. I believe those trade days are extremely valuable, we all do, for teachers. And what they'll do is they'll front load a lot of work and take that, some of those opportunities throughout, throughout the year and mainly in the summer where they, they have that time to be able to apply a lot of their learning, in essence, for a day trade later on. So the hours are still being conducted with just the opportunity to swap out one of those days. There's some thoughts on that. Maybe even that June 7th day is a possibility, that last day. But we will, we will, to be determined.
So if you, if you do that, and if it is June 7th, it doesn't affect the students' parents?
That's correct, that's correct, yep.
Are there Act 80 days in here?
There are, there are. Typically, it's going to be our January 18th day and parent conferences, November the 6th, are Act 80 days. So the work being conducted on those days, parent conferences as Act 80, January 19th curriculum work will fall and we'll make sure that language is associated with Act 80.
So in the past, we've had to do special Act 80 days for kindergarten and for, I think, 12th grade commencement. Are those, are those not, are those not issues this year because of the way the calendar falls?
So those will be issues. And we typically will get those approved from you in August when we go through and we delineate those. Because they, we will look at what that kindergarten split day is, going half the alphabet on the first day, half the alphabet on the second, and then the third day will be the full, just to allow for our teachers to have that, that.
So do we not have, we don't have enough data to put that in the calendar now?
I mean, we certainly can. If you want to, I can get that information.
I mean, I, I, it'd be fine, I just don't see, I don't know why we would need to vote on it again. We could also put in the commencement, 12th grade commencement one if that's necessary again. I mean, no sense, we, if we could just, if we know that data now, we could approve it with the calendar. We don't have to revisit it.
Okay, I'm good with that. Great. All right, and as you review this and look at this, and you have additional questions or additional comments, feel free, of course, to, to send those to me and we'll, we'll take a look at those as well. Any administrator wanting to, to make any comment or report it this time? Yeah, I'm going to, just because there's a lot of movable pieces, I'm going to refer to making sure I get this accurate, for sure. So coming up, upcoming schedule tomorrow is a two hour early dismissal for students due to the fact that we have evening parent family conferences. The times for dismissal are 12:45 for high school, 12:52 at the middle school for buses, and 12:42 for car riders. 1:30 will be elementary school dismissal for car riders and 1:42 for bus dismissal. Friday, November 7th is a regular scheduled day of attendance for all students. Monday, November the 10th, our students are not here because we're in parent family conferences all day during that time. And November 11th, all offices in schools are closed in observance in honor of our veterans in, for Veterans Day. And we'll be meeting here at 7 o'clock for our regularly scheduled board meeting. That is, information on that is a pop up on our website and a phone, or rather, an email will, and has gone out to families as well. And if there are any questions from parents out there or guardians, feel free to reach out to your schools, high school or the school's office, and they'll be able to help you with any of that information. Anybody else? Any public comment? Give me one second, I'll check for any electronic comments. Thank you. There are none, I will, if there are no other comments at this time, have a good evening.